All right, good evening, everybody. Today is June 13th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everyone could stand, then we'll say the pledge allegiance of America. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item on the agenda would be a request for waiver of site plan review approval for a art show tent between the library and Niagara Firehouse from Jennifer Z. Because I'm not going to try that.
I come up here.
Yeah, if you could just run through quick what you got.
So, yes, hi, I'm Jennifer Zarotsky. I am the chair of the Millis Cultural Council. Last week it came to my attention that I needed a site plan review and approval for a 20 by 30 tent that we'd like to put over the Millis Public Library green. We're having an art show on Saturday and we thought it would be nice if we could have a covered event and a performance venue. We are going to have it professionally installed by David Capone of Tents of Norfolk. He says he's worked with your building inspector before. It would be proposed to go up Friday, taken down Monday, but we're really only going to use it for that Saturday afternoon. The building commissioner, to my understanding, requested a site plan review and approval. And since this is a temporary structure that will be up for seven days and is just barely over the 500 square feet, we're requesting a waiver of the site plan review and approval.
Yep, so that's a, they just do that as a, as a check?
Sure.
So, it's a thing. So, I make a motion unless there's any comments from the board. No, okay. So, I make a motion that we approve the site plan waiver for the library and Niagara Firehouse.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much and hope you can stop.
Thanks.
Well, actually, do you want, did you tell everybody the time? You might as well since you.
One to four.
Well, if you're doing in the, here.
One to four at the Millis Public Library and then we're following it with a special coffee house, I think, that starts at seven if you want to hang in the area for food at all the lovely establishments. Now, I'm running back to the eighth grade promotion.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda, just slightly ahead of schedule.
It's not a public hearing.
Anthology of Millis assisted living facility closeout of the planning board special program.
Hi, I'm Wayne Foley. I'm with Calhoun Construction and we're here looking to have the landscape bond released on 125 Dover Road.
All right. Melissa, do you want to run through the, you guys did a review and there was like a few handful of small items you want to run through?
Yep. So, we did a review and issued a letter. There was a couple items that were addressed. We did have somebody out yesterday morning to look at, there were a couple stop signs, just some cleanup on the swales. I guess the couple things that we might want to speak to is that the, one of the conditions of the planning board decision was to have specific spaces assigned for staff parking versus visitor parking at the facility. So, I don't think that has yet been identified unless it happened last day. There might be some discussions. It's not a site work item. It's just identification of spots. And then the other one was the as-built plan. We know they went in, there's roof infiltration systems for each of the cottages. We inspected them as they went in, but they're just not reflected on the as-built plan. So, I know the engineer is working on adding that to the plan according to Wayne and the feedback we got there. And then lastly, again, it's not a site work item, but one of the things that the board will want is just a copy of the long-term O and M plan for the stormwater infrastructure updated with the current owner's name and information on it, for your records, for their records, so, because the ownership has changed since, you know, the initial approval. So, just a couple documentation things really are left.
All right, and just early, the one that was one, there was one question earlier brought up by a resident in a previous meeting where they had some drainage issues and I know that they went back, they dug it out, they re-rated, they put a swale in. So, I think that's all taken care of.
Yep. So, there was, we were out in the early, early spring and that was addressed with, there was some grading that was revised and a trench, a stone trench put in along the property line to address that concern. So, it's a, it's a change from the original approved plan, but it, you know, looked good. I think it addresses the issue. The building inspector looked at it too before he gave the occupancy permits. Right?
Yes. So, when the, when the issue came up, we addressed it immediately and I believe it's reflected on the new ad built as well.
It is. Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I'm just bringing it up because somebody had come in before, so. All right, does the, anyone on the board have any questions? Okay, let's go ahead.
Melissa, was there any concern at all with the standing water? Or is that something that was just addressed? I just missed.
In the basin, yeah, there's, there's a little bit, but it's something that through the operation and maintenance ongoing O and M plan, that's kind of why I want to make sure we get a copy of the O and M plan updated by the property owner. Because if anything, even for now or in the future with the basin needs to be addressed, they're supposed to do annual inspection of the basin. And if there's any maintenance issues like that, they would address them kind of as an ongoing condition of the property. So, it wasn't enough to be concerned about, I think, to close out the project, but it'll be something that, you know, in the annual inspections that the property owner does, that the town requires, you know, if it comes up in the future, it would be something that's on the property owner to maintain their system. And they'd have to address that, you know, themselves.
And we have notified ownership of that condition, so they're reviewing that now to get that, that package together.
Okay. So, I'm thinking I want to make a motion that we could, let's see, we wanted to close out the special permit and now the, and the bond reduction, we'll bring the bond down to what? Sorry.
See, I think you could close out and release the bonds. The bond was basically holding for the site work items that were not complete. So, all the site work items are complete. It's just a couple housekeeping items on the as-built. So, if you wanted to release it pending receipt of those items, it could go down to zero.
Okay, can I?
So, you want to do two motions.
Yeah. Yeah. Perfect. Okay, great, thanks. All right, so I make a motion to close out the planning board special permit for Anthology of Millis.
Pending.
Oh, sorry, pending the, pending the receipt of the three items that we had. The marking of the staff, parking spaces, the as-built reflecting the, the new basins and then the O and M plan with the current owner's name on it.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, so that's one. And then the second thing is that I make a motion that we reduce the bond amount by $114,180 to make it zero for the project.
Do you want it pending receipt of this?
Oh, pending, pending the same three items, yeah. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
Break, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's still not a public hearing. No, no, I'm just, just looking, I'm looking at the time. We're doing well. I haven't eaten that coffee since 12, so. All right, so the next item on the agenda is an informal discussion for a bond, construction bond estimate and a covenant modification approval and a bond agreement approval.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Edward Cannon, on behalf of Emerson Place Development, TD Development, the applicant, Bob Fox, who was the developer, and Dan American is with us tonight as well to possibly chime in. So, there's a covenant, as you all know, on, we're hoping to post the bond to get a release of most of the covenant. We are asking that four lots remain subject to the covenant, so we're asking for a modification of the covenant. And that is because there's a small portion of the roadway that falls across registered land. And so, back in December, we filed to withdraw the land from registration, so then we could then deed it to the town when it's ready. Otherwise, we have to do a new land court plan, which is just time and money. Might have been shorter at this stretch, but, so, you know, that's been sitting there. It's assented to by all parties, all lenders. We just are waiting for land court to act on that. So, we'd like to have the other lots released, but hang those, hang onto those four lots as security for the board to know that we're going to either get the withdrawal order from the land court or we're going to do the required land court plan either way to complete the transfer into the town. And, you know, those lots will remain subject to the covenant. That's what we're, we're asking on the modification of the covenant and, and then with Melissa's input, you know, sort of arrive at a figure for the bond so that we could then remove the covenant. And then one thing that Melissa's not able to do, but would like the board to consider is credit for materials that are on-site. And Dan can speak a little bit more cogently to that than I. But, you know, that's a board decision. That's not something that Beta can presume. And so, that's why we'd like you to consider that as well.
Right, so with that, so Beta put together, you know, our normal estimate they went through. And they onsite have the parts for the culvert crossing and they also have some loam to do the size of the roads, which is onsite. So, what the applicant is asking for is credit for those items because, you know, it's there. And the question is, you know, which we can discuss later, but, you know, we need to think about, you know, how that works. So, did you have more that you wanted to go through or did you?
I think that's it. Yeah, I think it's just a really, at this point, arriving at a number. I don't know if the board has copies of the bond agreement and the partial release and modification of covenant. I will just add that both of those have been approved by town council.
Yeah.
So, we've worked on those in preparation for this meeting.
Yep, that went back and forth a few times. So, Melissa, just want to run through the high-end executive overview of what the bond is for.
The bond, sure. So, the bond, the, so basically what has been substantially completed is the drainage infrastructure in, this is for phase one, so it's ma, the main road of the subdivision. It doesn't include the two cul-de-sacs. So, they've substantially completed the installation of drain as well as all of the infiltration basins for the subdivision, also the sewer and water. And then they've paved the road to binder for most of the roadway. There's about 700 feet that has not been paved yet. So, they still need to do top course paving, curving sidewalks, streetlights, lighting and concrete pounds, some miscellaneous sewer and drain covers related to paving, street trees, and then one section of retaining wall remains. We've also included in the bond estimate the waiver payments for sidewalk and the wireless for fire and police. As far as I know, that, that's still owed to the town. We carried 75% because, like I said, it's for one of the road, the main road, May Road, but not the other two. There is a quantity in here for some post-construction cleanup and restoration of the stormwater infrastructure as well as the as-built plans. And then there's a 20% contingency and that covers things like if the town were to have to construct the road, you'd have to put it out to bid and go through a engineering process to facilitate that work. So, that's what that number covers. So, that's, I guess, the high level of what's included in the bond. And we, we cover, as we said typically, as we always do, standard practice, we just include everything in the bond that's not constructed in place. So, it doesn't account for any materials that are on-site credits.
Right, so I, I was still, the applicant's been in touch with us and said, hey, you know, can we get credit for the, for the culvert? So, that's fine. He's got slips. I think the only thing we'd have to do is have somebody check it, you know? And I know you might have the invoice, but I don't see them. You know what I mean? Is we haven't seen the pieces, you know what I mean? Just to make sure that three of them are cracked in the middle. So, I think that would be a minimum phase. We'd like to maybe have them just inspect and say, you say you have 12 pieces, they'll go out and say, you get 12 pieces, they're all in good shape.
Well, the thing is, is Bob, Bob was out there Monday, you, the inspector, and we walked, walked through there and, and I have all the delivery slips here.
No, no, and I got it. All I'm saying is I haven't looked at them. If Bob was out there and that's the same thing, and Bob says, hey, they're great, all done. So, I don't have any issue with that. The only other thing is Saint Devil's advocate on the loam. So, you get a big old pile of loam there. A, we have to install it, which we, they, I think they had, they had supply and install in their, in their estimate. If we say, hey, you can use the loam that's on-site, we have to guarantee that loam's there because loam can disappear really quick because, you know, it doesn't take one truck out hundreds of yards of material. So, the question is, is if we say, hey, we're going to credit you 600 yards of loam, what's our guarantee that, you know, someday it just doesn't? And I'm not saying that that would happen, but, I mean, that's something we, you know, have to think about. If we get to the end and for some reason that we need that loam, what's our guarantee that it's going to be there? And I'm just, I'm just doing devil's advocate. So, if the board's okay with it, I mean, I don't necessarily think anything like that would happen, but that would be the risk that we would take, you know, because it's, the loam is, can disappear. The, the culvert, you know, that would take a little more effort. It would take more effort probably to get it out of there.
I mean, I don't mind if you deal with it at the next meeting on a credit.
Yeah.
But we want to leave here tonight with a number to give to the bond company.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, we can deal with that then, I mean.
Yeah, and that's fine. I'm not trying to make it to, I'm just, all I'm saying is I'm bringing up all the things that, you know.
I understand, yeah.
So, so that's up for you guys. Like I said, I don't have a problem with the culvert. If the culvert's there and Bob says it's great, then fine, you should get credit for it.
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead.
If you go up there tonight, you will see there's only like 100 feet left to do. It's the lowest part of the wall. So, there's a few pieces left.
Right.
That's all. You see substantial work has been done. I mean, I don't want you to go there tonight, but I can assure you that. They're going to be done next week.
Yeah, yeah. We're not, we're not, we're not, yeah. You should have got it done by this week, but we wouldn't be talking about it. So, anyhow, like I said, we're leaving that up to us to discuss and decide what we want to do on that. You know, I don't have an issue with give crediting him for the cast pieces. The loam, you know, I, go ahead.
Is there a huge pile of loam? 600 yards?
Huge.
Okay. Take pictures.
Thousands of yards.
Take pictures.
I'm sure it was probably the biggest piles of loam we've ever seen.
You're going to be selling it?
I would love to, I will take a picture for you.
Not for me, but for the board.
No, I know.
And I should have a picture.
Dan quantified it at the end and I think Dan went out and actually quantified that there was enough loam to cover that. He had sent a letter. But, Dan, do you want to?
Yeah, I just indicated there's at least 700 yards out there, so there's plenty of loam to do what's needed. And on the wall, I mean, if you guys aren't acting on the bond until your next meeting, which is a month from now, that wall's going to be done or substantially done.
Well, I don't have an issue on, you know, you want to get the mark out here with the bond. I feel, I mean, we've gone through this pretty good. I don't have an issue on getting the number tonight, myself. You know, we've been going back and forth a lot during the past month on this and, you know, I think the num, I think, you know, the numbers that we've gotten minus any credits that, you know, we'd be willing to give the applicant, I think that would be a fair number to cover the, what, you know, what would we need to cover to protect the town's interest.
Well, if the, if the wall's going to go in in the next couple weeks in the, I mean, could you just delete that number out of the bond is what you're saying, right?
Right, you're not going to present, are you going to present the documentation at the next meeting, Bob?
No, no.
It's done tonight? You want to do it tonight?
Yeah.
All right, so, there's just a big, big number in there for that last wall, $180,000. And all the material's onsite and there's a couple weeks of labor to install it. It's, it's just a much bigger number than you need. So, we would just ask you to lower that number to something more appropriate with what's left to do on that particular wall.
And that's, and that's what I'm bringing forward. It's, you know, we get, we're trying to be, you know, the, we're trying to make sure we cover the town's interest, but we also want to give the applicant credit for credit due, work done.
So, so there's 180,000 that's left. I, the wall is 62,000 materials.
Right.
That's 120,000 for labor. They're going to be there for two more weeks.
Right.
I want that job. Three guys. So, there's a, it's a big cushion there.
So, in your mind, what would you think a fair number would be for what you have left?
For what we have left?
Yeah.
I mean, I would say this, it's two men, so this is your.
Activator.
Two men and a machine.
Yeah.
For two weeks.
Yeah.
30,000?
Yeah.
I mean, that, is that, I think that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, so we could round, we rounded up a little to 50 and that, you know, that gets 130 off of his, off of his number, you know, but, like I said, the only thing I would, would ask is just to make sure that, you know.
What do you mean rounded up to 50? Excuse me. Because there's $62,000 of material.
Right, that it's all there on-site.
Yes, he wants the credit of the money back.
Right, so, all right, so.
So, we're, what we do is if we, if we, instead of 180, we say we knock it down to 50. He said it would cost 30 to install it. I added 20,000 to that. So, we'll put 50 in.
So, the bond in essence would just cover the labor.
Okay.
Whatever rule we.
Yeah, that's all. Does the board feel comfortable with that or?
I'd like to know.
Sort of. To simplify it, it's, it's two men and a machine.
No, I just, I just didn't understand. I missed his math.
That's the cost, that's the risk of the town for two weeks.
Right.
And I said 30 and I'll go with 50. I mean, that's, two men and a machine aren't going to cost more than 20.
So, that, you know, that would, that would basically knock down, you know, the material's there. And like I said, the only, the only thing we do want to do is just have Bob, you know, since he was out there, just confirm that, yes, we have enough pieces to complete. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a, besides the block material, you have a guardrail and you have, you know, some tieback systems and.
There's a separate line of guardrail.
Um, the.
Yeah, you have 50,000.
Oh, yeah, the guardrail is, sorry, the fence.
Yeah.
Um, the fence is, you know, there's some miscellaneous, but it's.
Could be wrapped in maybe that cushion that we have for the, the labor cost?
Potentially, yeah.
All right, so that just, you know, we should, and then on the loam, you know, the loam's there, the, you know, the, you'll, they just have to install it. So, we credit, we would credit him for the loam and they'd still owe the, we'd still keep the installation and the, you know, and I think that would be fair.
So, actually do the math, it's going to end up that.
Did you do the math? Yep?
So, what, you're talking about.
So, you have 45,000 on loan, 220, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you took 20,000 off of that, 25,000 off of that, plus the 130. That would be 150, 155,000 lower than the number.
All right.
It's a 20% rounding, I, you guys can just pick a random number.
Yeah, so it's like 1292 less 150. 1142.
1142.
1142.
264. Wait a minute, there's more numbers here. Hold on. Minus 1, 5, 5, 0, 0. What did you come up with? Did you do that? You guys done the math?
So, we've got.
Take 155 off it.
So, we're adding up the two line items that we currently have and take 155 off it.
Yeah.
All right.
155.
7220, is that right?
I'll leave this with them. Because they need to get the one, what do you have inside both of the places?
So, what I have is 2220 for the loam and 50 for the.
If you, so we're going based upon the subtotal of 1,052, right? Because then you have to recalculate the 20%.
I was just going to leave the 20. I was going to leave the 20%.
Yeah, we just go with rounding.
We'll knock 155,000, $155,000 off it.
All right, so then, then just knock 155 off the bottom line.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to do right now.
1137264. Minus 1, 5, 5.
Are we just going off the subtotal?
No, we're going off the.
Total, total.
I know, yeah.
What, what, I have 1137264.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
None of us are mathematicians.
264, 0, 0. Going back to law school.
Okay. All right, um, does everyone feel good with that?
Good enough.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think it's all right, yeah.
All right, um, let's see, so I make a motion that we approve the bond amount for Emerson Place Phase One at the amount of 1,137,264 and zero cents.
Second.
Cool. All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, so we took care of that. And then on the covenant, you need us to, could you repeat that for me just because I forgot in 10 minutes?
So, we're asking for a partial release of the covenant. Normally, when, when the bond would be posted and presented to the board, we're asked for full release, but because we have this issue with registered land that isn't resolved yet, we're asking to modify the covenant. So, lots 5, 6, 29 and 30 would remain subject to the covenant as security for the town to make sure that we either get the order of removal, withdrawal from land court or we do a land court plan. What I would suggest if it's amenable to the board is I do have the agreement for subdivision security in the form of the bond, so I would plug in the number that you've just approved. If the board's amenable, hopefully you'd sign that tonight and then I can take it with me and get it over to the bonding company. I have the partial release and modification of covenant that Mr. Fox has signed. I can leave that with the board because you don't want to give that to us until we get you the bond. And so, if I leave it with Camille, then we get, you get, we get you the bond, then the board can sign it and I can just swing by Town Hall sometime to pick it up. So, that was kind of my.
Thought process.
That works.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, that's, you know, that's, you already brought that up to us before and I know Josh, you and Nicole had talked about that and it makes sense. I mean, so, I got it. I don't, I think, and Jay has also reviewed this. So, town council for people at home has reviewed this and approved this protocol, so.
Exactly.
All right, so I make a motion that we do a partial release to the covenant and it would be, the town would be holding lots 5, 6, 29 and 30 of the subdivision as collateral.
And this is all pending receipt of the agreement?
Correct.
Yep.
That's pending receipt of the bond.
Brother Fox, manager.
Aye, seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion with the group? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. And Ted, do you want us to do that right now?
If you, if you would mind, Mr. Chen, that'd be great.
Out of the way. So, do you want, do you have one of, one that you want us to sign?
Yes, the, the agreement for the bond, and I'll take that so I can send it to the bond company.
Right, so we were given, what I'm saying is, you want to, you have something right now that you're going to-
Correct, yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, so I wanted to make sure I understood.
This is the partial lease of covenant, we, you know.
Yeah.
So, I'll get that once you get the bond.
And we sign this one.
You could, I'll take that.
Is the first page off still, Ted? Like, what with all the, the recording explanation? Is that all in there?
Yes.
I can run and make a copy of it.
Yeah, fine. Okay.
And then this will go until the bond-
Till we get you the bond.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. Eleven, three, seven, two, six, four, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll, we'll confirm that, and then once we confirm, everyone can, someone can sign. Doesn't follow this one by any means. Sure, yeah, you want to hang on. Perfect.
So, this is your last, you have to sign on to.
So, pressure, though.
And it was actually, while, since we have Mr. Fox, there was one thing that I just did want to bring up, and just, we had talked about it. So, during the construction process, there were some vehicles going up and down Curve Street. I talked to, I talked to Mr. Fox, and he spoke, it was a contractor that wasn't familiar with what was going on, but he's aware of it and will work towards making sure that the gang doesn't drop up and down.
Yeah, it was, they would, it was, it was asphalt day, so, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know.
No, I know.
But, so he should've told the asphalt company.
Right, but you're gonna make an extra effort to make sure that we do the best, we do the best we can.
Well, the other one, we gotta be real careful, because it's the corner of Ridge Street, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That end.
So, okay, um, all right, so I think, yeah, Camille will make a copy of that, so I think you guys are, oh, no, the only other thing was, actually, while we had here-
She's not here to take minutes.
What?
Anything else you discuss. Camille's not here to take minutes.
Well, it's, oh, okay, you're right.
It doesn't matter that it's informal, she still needs to be able to take minutes.
I get it, good point, thank you. We are re- recording, but that doesn't make sense. I do want to talk quickly about the Acorn Basin. When Camille gets back. So, we have to wait. Actually, we could do the meeting minutes, I can't do that either, because she's, she's there.
You can't do anything.
Can't do anything, well, I can read the update. Yep, she's back. All right, um, now that Camille's back, I'll get this. Um, I just wanted to go through, with Acorn, on Acorn Place, there's been an ongoing issue with the retention basin, and Dan has put together a option and presented it to Melissa. Melissa reviewed it and said that, you know, that will work. I do want to get that taken care of, so, it's not a lot of work. Can we get, we'd like to have a guarantee that it be done in, like, two to three weeks, so it's done, so it's off, off the board, done, taken care of. Can we get that taken care of?
Well, they're, they're working with the association on a whole bunch of things that need to get done, and this would all be part of that?
Right, but here's the thing, I'm tired of waiting for this. Okay, so, we would like to get this taken care of, so it's off the books, and that's something that we don't have to deal with. It's, it's been over a year, so, if you think-
One of the problems is we're in litigation with that, you know that.
Yeah.
Yes, and a lot of the work has been suspended because of the litigation.
Okay.
And this, the retention bond, it, it is draining.
Yeah, well, you pulled the plug.
Whatever, right, I understand.
No, I got it, I got it.
And we, we have a punch list of three hundred and forty items that, and we've done two hundred and eighty of them, at a cost of about ten thousand for us. I just want you to know, and the lawsuit was for a million eight. So, this is what we're dealing with. We want to proceed to finish everything. It's just that, they can complain, but they're not cooperating with us, and I, and I just can't, we just can't proceed on a lot of this stuff.
So, could I, I just, could I, and just pretend I'm silly, so, you know, the, the three hundred and forty-eight item punch list, we had one house that we had that, for a punch list item, so, and, you know, it was, it's on sale in Weston now for the highest price in Massachusetts, that at a three hundred and forty-eight. So, I don't care about the punch list. The, like, what I, what I'm saying is, we've been talking about this for a year. All you have to do is dig a hole in the bottom of the basin, put a drain in, and we're done. Can we just do that to get it taken care of?
I don't know what the plan, the extent of the plan is.
Well, that's what you're gonna do, is dig a hole in the bottom, put a drain-
We're putting a sub-drain in the bottom of each basin.
Oh, just a, you know, what, what are you talking, a couple of days?
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
All right, so I haven't seen the plan.
Yeah, no, no, and I, I just, and the only thing is, it's just been, you know, it's just been on our docket to get rid of it.
Let me, let me see, we are still, we are doing work there, so let me see what we can do, what it is. I didn't, I didn't realize it was, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, I thought you would, I thought you would talk to Ted.
He's seen it, but he hasn't seen the final, final version, which is slightly different.
Yeah, so, we just, just like I said, just, we're, you know, we've been talking about it forever.
I understand, appreciate the board's cooperation and everything, and we'll definitely see what we can do.
Okay. That'll be great, thanks, just, then we don't have to talk about it anymore.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
All right.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Oh, well, actually, we talked about that, that was actually one of our discussions. Who knew? I was ahead of schedule. The last, or next item is Rocky's Ace Hardware. Oh, I see, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Oh, and the update, so I have, somewhere in here is the town update. All right, let's take a peek at that. All right, and so, part of our monthly updates of what's going on in the town, Anthology at Millis, we just closed that out, so that should be actually off our books after the next meeting. Regency at Glen Ellen, according to, according to Millis assessing, two hundred and sixty units are now on the tax rolls, either complete or partially complete, and the project is in phase three of three phases, so that is well underway. Cannabis business, six, one, seven, they had a few items remain on their final building inspection before an occupancy certificate is issued, and they also, we also approved a next grid solar site approval for a parking lot canopy for solar going on over there. And, actually, now that I think of it, we should let Melissa go, so, we're all set.
It's okay, I like the town, I like the update.
Yeah, no, no, I just, sorry, I didn't realize you were still here. Anyhow, GTE, Manufacturing, fourteen eighty Main Street, that was the one across from Black Howe. We approved the initial permits, or the initials, special permit. We haven't officially, we've got official word, but the property is up for sale, so the guess is, is that that is not going to happen. One fourteen Union Street, which was the Herman Shoe, they're still working on PFAS on that. Woodlands, which is Cottage Ave, same thing, that's still waiting. They had some property issues that they've been working on. Two thirty-two, two forty-eight Main Street, which is a forty B, they have put the second of three foundations, that's the one up near Large Road, I think, yeah, so that one, they've got, I saw the one in the back was done, and they have another foundation in, on the uphill side of that. Thirteen forty-four Main Street, Cobble Knoll Estates, a petition was filed, the Zoning Board of Appeals by Roach Building Company Incorporated. The applicant now seeks a compliment, comprehensive permit to construct twenty-eight units of townhouse-style condominiums. So, that's, so that's a friendly forty B construction, and that's, I think thirteen forty-four is across from-
Tractor Supply.
Yeah, that's the yellow building across from Tractor Supply up there. Emerson Place, we just talked about that, they're working on trying to finish up one of the culverts in the first section of road. Ten sixty Main Street, which is Butter Bing's old place, the, that's, is going to go as twenty-four units with six affordable. The owners expect to appear before the Zoning Board of Appeals in July. PFAS treatment plant, the new building's construction's complete, the facility's going through final testing, and the plans are to start up in mid-June, so that was, the EPA decreased the amount of PFAS that were allowed in water, and so we had to build a filtration system to filter out the forever chemicals, which are what PFAS are, so. Lansing, Millis, sixty-four Exchange Street, we had a meeting with the Select Board to see if we could actually get a tenant for that, and the Permanent Building Committee will be seeking bids for exterior shell improvements, including replacing the leaking roof, soffit trim, flashing repair, siding sidewall repair, and replacement to stabilize the building. So, we want to try to at least get it so water's not getting into it, and then we're, been encouraging the Select Board to get a tenant, because that's the thing that will make the building last longest, is to have something in there. And then the forty A, three A, MBTA rezoning, the Advisory Committee has met several times, the consultants from NPAC, a townwide informational gathering event was held in February, which I missed, I was one day off. From that, Millis residents identified town areas for multifamily development per mass, the new mass MBTA rezoning. The analysis indicates three areas near the town center would be possible for multifamily development. A thorough zoning analysis of this area is in process. Later in the summer, the three A Advisory Committee will review our consultant's detailed investigation, proposing zoning changes for the committee's consideration are forthcoming. So, basically, with that, the state has changed the zoning or required the towns to allow more dense zoning, taller. They've waived some of the requirements to make it so that, the hope is, that there would be more affordable housing to be built. So, that's, that's the, what they're, what they're trying to do. And then earmarked for Business Improvement District, Millis was included in the Chapter two sixty-eight Earmarked Act of two thousand twenty-two for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fund the creation of a, of a Business Improvement District. The next step is to create a public request for proposal to find a contractor that can assist in building the, in building, in creating the building, sorry, Business Improvement District. So, go ahead.
Just go back to the MBTA rezoning, just a clarification, it's not for affordable housing, capital A affordable, as in forty B, it is for non-governmental regulated, more affordable versus your typical center entrance colonial that we find, just as a clarification.
Yes.
It's not, unfortunately, the state has two forms of affordable housing, and they refer to them as capital A affordable and lower A affordable, because they couldn't come up with the second word. So, but ju, just to clarify for people out there, this, this, the MBTA zoning, when it, when it, if it goes through, will not be to regulate or add for more additional forty Bs. It's just for, not, it's for something that's that is more reasonable than acre lots and single-family homes.
It'll still be market rate.
Yes, it will all be market rate, there'll be no government restriction on there as far as, you know, applicants applying and having to monitor, as you do with a forty B, or any sort of, any other sort of, that some people call subsidized housing.
Right, so what they did is, they, they waived a bunch of the requirements that, that added to the, you know, to the difficulty to build. So, basically, you can build denser, you can build taller, you can have a smaller lot size, you can build, you can build by right, you can build duplexes, triplexes, I think that's the word, triplexes. They could build tall buildings in Newton, they, on Washington Street, they had proposed a four-story, yeah, four-story in, in, in downtown Newton, where they basically had ground level, and then three fours, and then the top floor was set back. So, I, they, I saw the renderings and, you know, it's, it's, and that over Newton, they're having some discussion about that. But, it, this goes back to the old, you know, we, the, the state has come to us, instead of with an incentive, this is the thing of, it's not the carrot and the stick, it's the stick in the stick. So, you know, we, we have to do this, and if we don't, they will take money away from us. So, there you go.
On that note.
And on that note, I make a motion that we-
Read the minutes?
Yeah, approve the minutes.
Yes, approve the minutes of-
That was just a note that was part of the other basis for May ninth.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the meeting notes of May ninth as written. All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great.
We have July eleventh, and we have to sit in August week.
Okay.
August eighth, work for people?
Sure, hold on.
August eighth, worth you.
Yeah.
Say goodbye.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Bye, Melissa, thank you.
Okay, Melissa.
Bye, Melissa.
All right, so, okay, August eighth is fine with me.
August eighth, okay for you, John?
Yep. Yeah, the only thing with that is, and that's, well, I'll have to bring it up, this, with the school thing, there may be things that, meetings that pop up, but, well, let's keep it as the eighth, and if something adjusts, or I can't be here, then, yeah, whatever, it should be fine.
And then while we're at it, do you want to do September?
Sure.
And the Select Board are meeting on a Tuesday in September on the nineteenth, so we can't do the nineteenth, but we can do the fifth, if that works for people, right after the holiday?
How about the twelfth?
The nineteenth, oh, I'm sorry, the twelfth is the one that they're meeting here, I'm sorry, I was confused. It's the twelfth that they're using this one, so it would either be the fifth or the nineteenth.
Yeah, I don't want it to run after the holiday.
Okay, the nineteenth.
Do you guys okay with not doing, or do you want to do it after the holiday, you care?
Either way, it's fine.
What, anyone have any preference?
No.
Let's do the, let's do the nineteenth.
Okay. You just need to sign this.
Yeah. Okay, okay, all right, well, with that all set, oh, go ahead, George.
Oh, there, there are, keep this as informal discussion on camera, just, just introduce you to some people.
Yep, all right, so, with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.